Yeah.
That's just.
Hi, Wendy Marcus.
Good morning, everyone. I'll take over the April first meeting of the Madison County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chris Wallace. If anyone can introduce themselves.
Tony Snickers.
Brendan Shea.
Rob Sweeney, Attorney Administrator.
Joe.
The Gag is prosecutor.
John Sweeney, Sheriff.
Rhonda Maynor, County Attorney.
Amy Rysberg.
Everybody should have received a copy of last meeting's minutes. Move to approve.
Second.
Move the first and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctors Snickers. Mr. Wallace.
Yes. Mr. Fair.
Good morning, John.
Hello, sir.
Actually, I had enough for you this morning. You guys have anything to me?
I don't believe so. Thank you, sir. Directives.
Sam.
Oh, right. Moving on down the line. Mr. Cal.
Oh, John, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, well, gonna do a quick update for everybody. There, I just talked to Mayor Martin. There's an article, business, close business journal thing got released about a mixed-use development out of twenty-nine and seventy that will include a certain say pay but also potential for a hotel. Um, they're gonna learn more information about that. They have not heard about the hotel as far as I'm aware. I just thought, I think I just talked to him this morning. So, we have a lot more information about that. Uh, I think if they're gonna be considering that, um, I think in May, potentially for rezoning. Um, I know if maybe it been, uh, has gotten y'all yet about, uh, the Honeywell Building in London. Um, that we were told a couple of weeks ago that the, um, the company that was gonna be moving in there from, uh, Italy, um, they, they have decided, uh, and they, they, they stated due to, they had already purchased the building, that due to, uh, potential terrorists as well as economic instability, that they perceive they're no longer gonna be, um, be kind of, in our, of the building, so they put up for, for a sale. Um, you know, depending on how you look at that, I know if it was a larger company, they may have taken more risk, but it's a family-owned company out of Italy. Um, they just saw uncertainty with everything going on, so they decided to back it. So, or try to find a tenant for that building, or, or, you know, somebody could, uh, purchase it. And, uh, the mayor knows slowly getting out of the public is probably get out even more. So, um, and then, uh, the last thing I'll mention, um, just, just to continue to be a lot of activity, uh, we continue to talk to Mid-Ohio about opportunities for along with sixty-one four or as well as point nine forty-two. Um, and continue, I think, to have, I, I've said with the, uh, few people, we continue to have a positive conversation with the, with the organization over the past month or so. Um, and I feel like we're, we're heading in the right direction with that organization. Questions or comments later on?
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. John Sweeney?
Yes, sir.
You want to go first?
Well, um, appointment to the Mental Health Recovery Board of Bud Green in Madison County. We were seeing two, two applications, uh, the deadline, I believe, is Friday. I know Grad would like to, um, ask for that appointment to be made as soon as possible. So, and we just passed out, uh, dates of Dunes' resume as well as, uh, I can't remember who.
Shelley Hill.
Who?
Shelley Hill.
Yeah, Shelley Hill. So, I, uh, I sent both of those resumes to you guys to review. Um, I'm not sure if you have strong feelings for one or the other, or if you would like to go through more of an interview process.
Who, this Friday?
The deadline for receiving the resumes was Friday. That, that is a date that we, um, established. So, those are the two that we had to receive.
Do you have any thoughts on the two applicants?
I'm not sure who the applicants are.
Well, okay, you weren't, you weren't, I thought maybe you were made aware of the two applicants.
So, uh, you know, just for everybody's benefit, a year or two ago, we changed the way we were doing appointments to boards. Where before it was just kind of, uh, arbitrary, random. So, so volunteer, so, you know, or the directors would come in with recommendations, which we felt at the back of our, at that time was not the greatest ideas because directors are essentially choosing their bosses or having some influence there. So, we, uh, we changed the policy in the process to post the positions, do some recruiting, take resumes, and then do interviews if necessary. And that's the way we've done board appointments now for, for a while.
Well, if the deadline's Friday, should we wait till at least Friday to make sure?
The, the last Friday is last Friday. Yeah. So, in the posting, the cutoff was Friday. For anyone interested, they were to submit their resume by Friday. And these are the two folks that we have, or two folks that you have to choose from. Hey, Grad and I, you mentioned the board, Kate and I, like to see this appointment, um, as soon as possible. I think both individuals are well qualified.
I agree.
Well, I mean, if I had to make up my mind today, I would go with, uh, Mr. Doom because I know him. That's it. I don't know who Shelley is. She's obviously in Brick's luck. She's very well qualified.
Brendan, any thoughts?
If with two, I think we're qualified candidates, it makes sense to have an interview.
So, we will, um, either I give interview and make a recommendation, or we can ask the two individuals to come in on Tuesday, you know, to, uh, have a discussion with the board. Either way.
I'm fine with you conducting the interview, some nice recommendation. Unless anybody feels strongly the other way. That's all for that?
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
Um, next thing I have on my list is, uh, I rescind in resolution one ninety-two dash twenty-four, uh, which was, um, resolved after the tornado, which was just about a year ago. It pretty much gave me godlike powers.
Very scary.
Yes, yes. So, um, I make a recommendation to rescind that, uh, because it leaves them and they're back to a normal state.
I move to rescind, uh, resolution one ninety-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
Move the first and the second. Any other discussion? None heard. Roll call, please.
Mr. Shea.
Yes.
Doctors Snickers.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace.
Yes.
There goes my whole about there. And that's all I have to give you today unless you have anything for me.
I do not. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Brief talkie recess.
I can attest. Yeah, I don't like that. I think that's certainly very well. Maybe do some, you know, see if I can direct. Obviously, there's not a good place in the country making it on purpose. Everything there, everything should probably be more full with maybe. Of course, I thought it was interesting, you know, some static, if you go to. We sold that, yeah, aside bulk of the residents. Saying, so maybe that's not.
A lot of relatives, I, I just. Just give us access, we say something.
When? When?
Yes. There's lots of people.
I'd like to see that up there.
Uno.
Hmm?
Uno.
One uptake? Three. See how long the last one is. In the last year, eleven, seven, Mars, the creation.
I dare you, Dan. You must have missed my date just. I'm looking forward to it. I just said, I want to do breakfast. I'll be for the first time. That's what we do, that's not. I'm really watching, don't forget I have a lot here.
So much.
I know, I know, it's a memory, by the way, but. See, I have my socks on. I did, I did. Glad you got some good views. Really, I didn't, I didn't like it, spending forever since I finished. Oh, yeah. I did, I actually did.
I think they're wanting to prove to someone, you know, they're.
Yeah.
So, they made their plans, because they're just wanting it to be more expensive. They didn't want we, so, yeah, they should, it just happened, you know, first, that is a recent choice, you know.
Well, we were doing the same thing, uh, for the metro. We should, twelve thousand housing. Right. So, yeah, and then all this has, they, they all were solid. And they have four, just wait, it's like.
I guess I just thought too.
Yeah, the huge.
I'm talking to the staff, it's a big problem. Yes, but thank you for your help. I still wish you.
Yes.
She opens the choices for Sydney, I said, she wants. Not just sending you. That worries, they found the same highway, responsibility.
Yeah.
Does they last time, is ready?
I'm just going up, but. We're gonna see they flack and things.
That's incredible.
So, yes. It's very.
Yeah.
Like, I think I should write it only, point three and three, they're the ones that are just, uh, they're a little better.
Wow.
Which is the line, you know, so, I think it's, yeah, it's.
Oh, we're making up for last.
It was like twelve percent. Whereas today, like old, you know, it goes like that, so I'm gonna do, hopefully, it's the line. Seven, small space, yes. It's been, I mean, it's, it's.
All the church is here.
Yeah.
I'm too bad.
So, uh, cool, anything else going on?
Yeah.
Just your exposure, I suggest. Yeah.
On Friday.
So, there's just all the.
What?
Yeah. It's not that, I think, I don't. I didn't mean to take it out. I think when we follow this, my first calendar, uh, it's, it's, it's challenges and. Like, I, the health department is ready to, they need, and there's some. It's just. I believe they received, we got it, uh, with. Show loss, because it's. They're going to, you know, and then. And, and. It's not fun, maybe for that, you know.
Is this a disclaimer, technical sense, or do we have any?
Yeah.
Say it.
No.
Give her plasma?
Yeah.
If they, and if they're giving money, let's see, you know, there's. They, there's. I'm guessing, I mean, it's a, so, yeah.
Shouldn't say that.
We haven't got some of the data, some of the discussions, just me. With, uh, Madison, saying, she was there, she walked some of the, but she's at right, so.
Well, we, we might change.
Breaking, breaking down, let's, the brides, but, and it's war, you know, there's fewer.
She didn't know, uh, the wrong.
I think she did email it wrong. Okay. I'm just asking about some of the data from the. They followed up with something like.
So, um, she, what she said, uh, apparently, she's pretty, called to the cyber. So, she wants to meet with me to try to explain, she's, how they, they, their budgets and so forth. So, I think we had a meeting last week. Yeah. Or, I'm sorry, this week. Although in this, this. Which I talked to the determinants of the, of self, sort of, right? They're, they seem to be like, okay with that, but we couldn't like get so much of something. Look from that.
If you're listening, they're finding, no, they're.
Well, the thing is, like, uh, airport, I'm going to, so he does, and sip a bag, two thousand here, ten thousand there, five thousand here, and it's like.
Well, the parents, the airport, whoever, prepare a face or something.
Then they, they wanted to make a backdoor specs, so, you know, go ahead and, tell you some of you guys paid for them, and they. And submit it with the list of your dollar, and see what they say.
Yeah, you can submit it all, yeah, and say, whatever they don't, hey, you might have to come up with the money.
Sure.
So, use the most of the options.
It's it. I mean, just. That's right, it's right. Called to me. I have a higher family, I have a girl, don't push, you're, you're. You do. I'm grass out. There's a poor people. Have you met or new commission? It was placed on. That's what it's called, isn't it? That'd be a. Always. That's a. You'll be a lead so much for there. I think it's a great job.
We do things all day.
But, yes. Constant. Constant.
Unstoppable.
Unstoppable.
But while we're, see their books, to let us know how much money they have to manage. It's been required.
I take that back. Eleven is a hundred. The highest for some one thirty-four. If we have.
Beautiful, yeah, I did it done. All right, so resume in our session here. Sir, as the engineer, I already said.
Doing well, good morning.
Good morning.
So, I didn't formally get anything on your agenda for today. But something came up yesterday with, uh, ODOT. And I wanted to see if we could have a conversation about it. Regarding US Route Forty. I think, I think I've talked to you guys about their future plans for, for that road. Um, we, we know it's in terrible condition. It doesn't have the traffic count currently in two support, four lanes. Uh, they are looking at a significant spend needed to completely rebuild it. And they have been talking about, over the last couple of years, what they call a road diet. Where they, where they reduce capacity of a, over-capacity road. So, they're, they've been talking about taking that thing down to two lanes. And I have been giving them over the last couple of years, and when I say them, I mean, their leadership working on it. Uh, very strong feedback that we would not be in favor of that here in Madison County. But it's short sighted. And I found out yesterday that they're, they're continuing with plans to, to do that. So, they would be taking it down to two lanes in Lafayette, but it can't be on. Uh, you know, keeping turn lanes and whatnot, but, you know, we, I've communicated to them that, you know, this is a, this is a major economic development.
Yes.
For us.
Hundred percent.
Um, this, this road serves as alternate route for I seventy during, during closures. Four lanes on, you know, both ends of where it ties into. Uh, and that, we think it's short sighted. Um, I've got a conversation going with the deputy director about looking at alternative improvements they can do to that road that would keep it four lanes and actually cost less money than total rebuild. But what I want to ask your board is, if I were to put together a letter, a resolution, or something formal, uh, that came from you, from me, the sheriff, whoever else wanted to join in, uh, urging them and, and communicating our view on that, if you would be in support of that.
And we don't want to go backwards.
Correct.
And Ohio State should be included in your conversation.
Ohio State is the, uh, far central view of stuff thing. Got the airport, be, it's incredibly short sighted. And I think it's primarily by one individual at the district. Uh, you know, feedback I've gotten from him, he was not receptive to, to, uh, to what I was saying.
So, it's just, so if they go to two lanes, they have to tear it all out. Right? And redo two lanes. How could that be?
You might pick one side of the median, right?
Yeah, I mean, you know, a hundred years ago, it was two lanes.
Oh, I know.
Likely pick one side to, to keep and then abandon the other. But it's just.
No. I mean, this has major, major impacts to the economic development speed of your plan and the plans for that corridor from Lafayette to Summer Pole.
They're looking at it through the lens of current ADT, current traffic. And it just absolutely fails to pull in the entire picture.
Yeah, and I wonder if, if it doesn't make sense to, uh, start talking to, um, Department of Development, you know, just all the entities out there that, that are stakeholders, basically.
Well, ultimately, right, I see this path going, if they, if, if ODOT wants to continue to go down this path, we're gonna, we're gonna pull in our legislators on this. And it's, it's not going to be a pleasant discussion that any of us want to go down. And that's, I'm trying to prevent that. I don't want to have to, you know, pull rank or anything like that, but.
Yeah, we might have to.
We will, if, if it comes to that, so.
Yeah.
It might make sense to include them in this initial process, too, if it's a letter and.
I think we do.
Include our legislators, at least make them aware.
Yeah, sure.
Get their thoughts.
Right.
So, you're saying you, you know that they would abandon one side, and so basically the cost savings would be.
I don't, I don't know for a fact, but they, they are talking about taking it down to two lanes.
Right.
So, likely, they would just abandon one side. Uh, you know, completely tear out existing pavement on the side they're gonna keep and completely rebuild that pavement like they've done with I seventy, that I said before. And it's, it would be a solution, but it's, uh, incredibly expensive and over. Uh, it, it's, it's too big of a project. It's unnecessary to take on that material. There are other ways that that road can be recycled and rehabilitated with existing material for far less money, uh, and, and keep the existing four lanes. So, that's the path I'm coming in to get down.
Yeah, and it's only, well, say only, but it's, it's west of Lafayette, doesn't go east.
Yeah, it'd be Lafayette, west of, yeah. It's my understanding.
Do you know when they would aim to start this project?
No, I don't, but, you know, these things take a, take a lot of time on the engineering front, so, you know, we're talking years down the road, but I don't want the, I don't want the snowball to get too far down the path that it can't be.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I think we'd definitely be interested in joining that letter, maybe even having Montrose engage with folks at development, folks in the governor's office that they have direct connect to, to let them know that we're opposed to any such project.
Yeah, even if we can, you know, because the district overall has been incredibly cooperative in supporting the efforts, even as fast away initially that we can support them to look at an alternative, an alternative that, you know, completely go backwards and take it to two lanes.
Backwards. So, are you thinking a, a letter from this office initially, see what that impact is if, if they decide to change course, and then if not, then into the next.
I, well, I think, I think a letter from, from your board joint with myself and, and the sheriff would be something that we could get out there quickly, formally. And then I think it's fine that we go ahead and have conversations with Montrose Group, with Representative Stewart, with Sandra Reynolds, and get that conversation going behind the scenes as well.
I think that's a good way to handle it.
Yeah. Okay.
When you say abandon the other side, that would be, is it, the pavement will stay in place, or they're gonna?
I, yeah, I, I, I don't think, well, I definitely don't know for sure. And I don't know the paper for sure. All I know is that they are, they are moving forward with planning to.
Just that'd be a terrible thing to have, if it was banned, you know, what, what's that gonna bring, you know, extraordinary activities, and then you look at the fact that if they are gonna tear it out, two thirds of the way there, you know what I mean? So.
Well, that's, that's backwards.
Yeah.
Any, any, uh, um, updates on forty-two and, and seventy that, when they're supposed to put a turning lane in there?
Talking to the engineering team on Friday that's working on that. It's still moving forward, albeit slowly.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't have any construction dates update. I mean, they've changed, they've had multiple project managers working on that at the district. They were initially trying to do some, in addition to the widening, trying to do some access management work that they were unable to get safety dollars for, so, they, they, my understanding is they're proceeding with just a, adding the two-way up turn lane in the center. But, you know, we were, we were concerned that, uh, the waterline project was going to overlap with that, and who's gonna get there first, and that thing's been in the ground for, I mean, two years now, I agree with this. Yeah, so. That's the best update I have. It is still.
Yeah.
Moving forward. I just don't have any updates on construction. And I'm also hoping they find a way to extend it all the way to, uh, point nine.
Yeah.
You know, they are, they do have construction of the, the roundabout at forty-two and twenty-nine. Funded, uh, so I hope that they can, they can tie those together. Because initially, they're gonna stop there at, uh, at Ag Pro.
Yeah.
So, I had to breathe this morning. I appreciate your attention.
Yeah, thank you for being here. Appreciate that update. Anything to work, please?
Chris, uh, just to let you know that the park board is getting audited. Um, so, I got a letter of engagement from the auditorium of the state, and that's gonna be something for you to sign him at the end of the meeting, Chris, but, um, so we've pulled in documents, working with the auditorium to pull some documents together for that.
And we have, uh, something, page of reviews.
It's mostly, there is some financial stuff. I think it's mostly records, record retention schedules, things like that, so. But, yeah, I'll dive into it once we get this signed, then. Um, second, uh, I sent you the lease for bridges. Um, and I sent you a very copy to look at. I did change the language a little bit yesterday.
I reviewed that. I had a couple of thoughts, and I wanted to get Rob's thought as well, so. Um, I have a month left on the lease, so we can. I, I didn't have an issue with the language. Uh, my initial thought was that it's not necessarily enforceable, but maybe informative for, uh, future, let's see. But what I wanted to ask, and here's where I wanted Rob's feedback, is, um, I've not seen that form before that we've used as county. What I have seen is where the county essentially subsidizes and agrees to pay that as opposed to a reduction of the total amount we've, that's the format.
Yeah, so we have something similar with.
Yeah, so we have something similar with the public health lease. So I sent that to you and, and I didn't loop you in on the reasoning that I had for adding this language. I did for the commissioners, but basically I want to be able to show the lease what the square footage range should be, because that brings up our base level of that building for any, like if we were to sell that building, we, we would be able to show what rental income would be and also have something to compare for future renters. Because Pier Father's vacant will be looking to lease that out, so we won't be able to say, you know, this is what the square footage actually would be built at.
I, yeah, I, I understand that issue. I guess what I'm saying is the format, I believe, more public health was different than this provision.
Yeah.
Exactly. The county agrees to pay that difference that they've reduced as opposed to essentially reducing the rate, giving them a, a lower rate. It's just an issue of format. I don't think either is wrong. It was just different than what I've seen before from the contracts.
Well, if we could, let's, let's delay it a week, because I think we have till the end of the month so that we can make sure. That.
And it sounds like you know, you're answered what I'm saying.
Yes, yeah. Next is Resolution two sixteen twenty-five, a resolution approving a lease agreement between the Board of Madison County Commissioners. I got out of. A resolution approving the state of work in, I am all out of. Yeah. Just wrong folder. Resolution approving the payment of invoices for the Madison County Auditor.
Move to proof.
Second. First and the second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snekas?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution nominating David Dean for the Ohio Senior Citizens Hall of Fame through the Ohio Department of Aging.
Moved.
Second.
First and the second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snekas? Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
A resolution accepting an expedited type-two petition for annexation to the Village of Plain City, Ohio for seventy point five plus minus acres from Darby Township to Matt, Darby Township, Madison County. So this is just to accept the petition, say we got it. I have, this week I got the resolution from Plain City, say they will give services to the area. So we're ready to approve it at the next meeting if you so choose.
Brian, you've.
What, can you talk through the process from here?
Sure.
What, what happens next?
We received the petition, they usually come from the real estate, real estate agent or lawyer. It comes to us, we accept it as a board to say that yes, it was received for a general entry. The engineer's office looks over the language, the.
Survey.
Survey and all that language.
They have to close literally.
Yeah.
No, I mean, yeah.
Once that approved, I get it back. I await the resolution to say that the person that's annexing will provide services to that area. Once I have that, we're really, they have to do all the mailing on their part to all the property owners and things like this.
Notifications.
So once I have all the paperwork finished, it's just up to this board to approve it.
It's attached to, so as long as it meets the statutory requirements, there's no discretion.
Right.
And the timeframe is?
Thirty days.
Thirty, thirty, yeah, we, I got to put together a, a flow chart for any.
See how smart I am about that.
And, and just for the record, like it's, it's, this is phase two of the Fisher Homes development of one one six two. Should that's, so.
So the, the notifications go out to the property owners and it's thirty days, thirty days from when, is it thirty days from the passing of this resolution today? Is it thirty days?
Thirty days from acceptance.
From the captain's, which is what we're doing today.
Yeah, you're not approving it, you're just accepting the petition, the annexation, annexation petition, starting that, triggering the start of that.
Right, and the, the property owners have a right to be notified, but other than that.
Yeah, those days are, they're called expedited types of annexations. It's, you know, anything under five hundred acres qualifies. It's very strong in favor of the municipalities as long as they, there's a list of boxes that need to be checked. As, as long as they check those boxes, then the next point, there's really no discretion from, from the county.
The number of boxes are pretty minimal too.
They are. From the survey standpoint, we don't even have the opportunity to correct the survey once it's filed with the board. So we, we check those prior to filing, just, just to keep them from having to, to refund, because we have, we have done that before. So normally the annexations really start with my office overview of those surveys to make sure they're okay before they get to your board.
Yeah, thank you for your view.
We do accept the resolution.
Second.
Number first and the second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snekas? Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution approving the notice of intent to request re, releasing funds for the Madison County twenty twenty-four development block grant program.
So.
Second. Number first and the second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snekas?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution increasing revenue to the FCSS federal revenue line and increasing appropriation to the FCSS transfer out expense line for an increased fiscal year twenty twenty-five allocation to the Department of Family and Children in around thirty-one thousand dollars. This is new money they're receiving because other counties didn't get, use their, all of their allocations that we distributed.
So moved.
Second. First and the second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Dr. Snekas?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
Resolution approving the twenty twenty-five annual fund reimbursement by transferring funds from Madison County Sheriff's Office.
They'll move. Second.
First and the second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Take it.
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes.
If you want to approve the one that Julie is gonna come and talk about, if you want to wait until her discussion?
We can wait, we can wait until her discussion, if that works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's your bracket, look, oh excellent, social merit and top four, strong question, very good.
It's your sweet sixteen hockey bracket.
Oh, excellent. Got the hockey on the bag. So, hockey bracket. Got the pigeon bracket.
There you have it, the frozen fork. So there's a frozen fork.
So interestingly, on the, on the bi-digester, so I, my, my property abuts Deer Creek. It's far away from where the digester supposedly is gonna go. The owner behind you is a new owner who just purchased that property. Not gonna say names, but I guess he was approached for easement. I don't know why that far away, unless it's for drainage. And he stood against it, so he didn't grant it. It has to be drainage, what else?
Literally, yeah, that's pretty.
It is. But it's Deer Creek, so I don't.
That distance away for drainage.
Because it's going the wrong way for the pipeline.
Drainage is that far away, doesn't make.
But I'm saying, why would they even attempt it? Well, isn't that major transmission line along the position of the bi areas?
There's a transmission line.
It's more likely that it's, that's what that was for. Yeah, they say it was five digests.
Were they pumping gas?
Look, they're still trying to pump gas. That's a transmission line now, six sixty-five.
Yeah, that all goes out the earlier.
On six sixty-five?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's a big, does that, is it five or one forty?
I think it'd be one forty-two.
One, one forty-two. It's by, it's over where Chuck people used to home and then.
It isn't going the wrong way. Yeah.
I know, you drive by, it's big.
I mean, it goes to West Chef, still. I guess it wouldn't be, it'd probably be one forty-two. I don't have on the line.
I know, it's way out, way out there. Well, that property does border one forty-two.
Oh, well, there you go.
Positive, it's a decent gap. Probably back up. It probably must board. I wish.
So is, is the main pipeline coming in from London? It comes from West Chef to London, from the earlier to West Chef.
That would make sense why.
I thought it went from where they're at, West Chef.
That feeds, feeds the rest.
I get it. Okay, that makes sense.
Robert, do you have any other comments, questions, updates? We've got some time here.
I just didn't know anything's moved, the legislature is about. Any updates on that stuff? Through third and the back.
I have not, no.
Well, on the legislation, so Senate Bill Two, which is a major utilities bill, have passed unanimously out of the Senate last week, the week before. And that did include a provision, basically granting local zoning authority for biodigesters. House Bill Fifteen was the companion bill in the House that was passed without that provision. So there's going to be a reconciliation process, obviously. So both of our legislators are aware and very supportive and say they'll advocate to try to have that in there. And then House Bill One Twenty-One, which is Representative Stewart's bill, that will likely not be, be heard until after the budget process, is what Senator Stewart told me. Yeah, I mean, so we're, we're hopeful on the utilities bill. It's stay in there, that'd be great news.
Still silent for anything from Vanguard on any of the requests we've made, nothing. Yeah, I have not had any, you know, recently.
It's been pretty silent.
They will be at a food convention on the second. Month, that would be this. Representing some of the food. At a convention or something like that for, they're gonna be soliciting the fact that they can take their food list and stuff like that from people. And we're gonna try to throw that up a little bit for them. But it's pricey entrance, it's a hundred and fifty dollars, particularly get in, up to that, so. Enough, I wouldn't even have my signs strapped on my shoulders to walk around. Although that last, in there for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Probably not long. Imagine you'd be asked to leave pretty quickly.
But other than that, no, I mean, I, I missed a few meetings, but I think everything's pretty much been as it, as it been and we're just still at that same old pattern. That's you guys, I don't, I don't know.
I'll blow some.
Here, I'll go now.
Guys, be up for that.
Morning, how are you? Good luck.
Good people here.
Very good. Good morning. You will.
All right. All right, good morning. We're here to proclaim April's Child Abuse Prevention Month. April's a big month for us, we do a lot of fun things. But first I wanted to introduce my staff. Here's the program.
I'm Brittany Young, the AP supervisor and APS supervisor.
I'm Sarah, the manual and going and the vouch and supervisor.
Amy, next, I'm an intake.
Hi, Hallie, I do ongoing.
I'm Katie, I do intake.
Kelsey Bradford, I do APS.
I'm Joan, I do ongoing.
I'm Sydney, I do intake.
I'm Felicia, I do, I'm a screener.
So just a few statistics, I know we come up on you guys a lot, we give you kind of some numbers and how we're doing. This, this team thrives. We're one of the top counties in the state. We were actually selected or we volunteered, but to sit in on the federal review because our scores are so much higher that it would help the state average. We've kind of avoided that for a long time because we know when they get down and start digging, they're gonna find the things that, you know, we need to improve. But for me, that was, I have a team that excels. So give me those little areas where we can improve and if we can help the state average on timeliness and things getting completed, that's what we want to do. So we are actually currently in the middle of a federal audit that we volunteered for, which is kind of scary sometimes. But in twenty twenty-four, we investigated seven hundred, two hundred and seventy-three cases of abuse and neglect dependency. So the ladies back here went to those homes, knocked on the doors, investigated, talked with families. They talked to five hundred and fifty-five alleged perpetrators. So those are the individuals that allegedly abused and abducted children. They went out there, we met with them, sometimes with law enforcement, sometimes with not, without law enforcement. They also had talked with seven hundred and thirty-one children that were alleged child victims. So of those two hundred and seventy-three reports, there were seven hundred and thirty-one children in Madison County that there was allegations of abuse or neglect. So the report number doesn't seem extremely high, but when you look at each one of those, there are a lot of kids that they went out and saw on a lot of alleged perpetrators. Also in twenty twenty-four, which this number is a rolling number, so it's not probably exactly correct because some kids were already in foster care come January of twenty twenty-four that aren't necessarily counted in the number. But in twenty twenty-four, we took thirty-six kiddos in care. Means we removed them from their parents, caregivers, whoever, you know, for whatever reason, whether it be dependency, they couldn't take care of them due to behaviors, abuse or neglect. They came into foster care for one reason or another. We were able to reunify twenty-six of those thirty-six kids. So leaving roughly ten, but of those ten, we were able to get six of those adopted. So there was really only a few kids that we struggled with over twenty twenty-four to find with long-term permanency, whether that was relatives or adoption. So that's a huge number. Wasn't able to find the state average on that, but I suspect it's highly above the other counties because reunification isn't something that's happening in a lot of counties. So we're really proud of the amount of kids that we were able to get adopted this year or in twenty twenty-four and reunify. We're also gonna plant four hundred and fifty-five pinwheels out under the sign today to represent the four hundred and fifty-five individuals that called for a kiddo in our county. So we're excited to do that and we're grateful that you guys are willing to proclaim this month as Child Abuse Prevention Month. As you know, we have our carnival at the end of the month. We're gonna be doing hammers and we have pork chops this year, so like we are stepping up. And hot dogs, of course, so come, come help. I love the help in the kitchen frying everything up. So it's April twenty-fifth, which is the last Friday of the month, five day. We have two generous donors, so we were able to leave everybody else alone this year. Prosecutors helped us and then we have another generous donor that gave us thirty-five hundred dollars. And so just to leave small businesses alone. So we were grateful that we could do that. And we were able to get everything we need and we're excited to have a carnival.
Since twenty fifth?
The twenty-fifth, yeah.
The Friday?
Yeah. From five to eight at the fairgrounds.
Since twenty fifth?
The twenty-fifth, yeah.
The Friday?
Yeah. From five to eight at the fairgrounds.
Very good. Well, with the proclamation recognizing April twenty twenty-five as child abuse. Very good, but with the proclamation recognizing April twenty twenty five as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the public hear deeply about child abuse and a majority report that child abuse is a very important moral issue to them. Whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that depends on involvement among people throughout the community. Whereas child abuse and neglect not only directly harm children, but also increase the likelihood of long-term. Physical and mental health problems, alcohol and substance abuse, continued family violence and criminal behavior. Whereas child malt treatment occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and don't know how to cope. Whereas the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community. Whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure each family has the support they need and raising their children in a safe nurturing environment. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools. Faith communities, civic organizations, law enforcement agencies and the business community. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities. And businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live.
To moot.
Second. We were first and the second, any other discussion? None heard, a little call please.
Mr. Shane?
Yes.
Doctor Sneak is?
Yes.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes. Thank you.
Can we get a?
Yeah.
Do any of you know about the same type of the wheels, are we to avoid the mulch? Put it in the.
I didn't even put them all in.
Okay.
That that's why I did it.
That's what I figured, but we wanted to make sure before we ruin some flower planting or any of that, so, okay.
So you guys gotta have that done.
We saw the.
Why don't we just get more?
They're doing something because of us. We will get some.
That's what they all put in. If I was sitting in the. Staircase.
Cause they put them into grass. And then the gas. And then when I do, the gas. You can't cut the grass if we're not guys. I would do it, you know, right?
I would, good. It's more like. I just know it's that. The marks are beautiful, they're like coffee beer and everything else.
You on the air, keep talking, they'll just focus right.
Yeah, it's probably recording that too, isn't it?
Oh, yeah. They're driving.
Well, we've confirmed it, you know, as you can see it. Within a couple of days, you can see that the meeting don't have to be. I just made it, it was like some, oh, you know, a lot of change or something like that.
I get it.
But it's not like I need fear necessarily, it's just.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure, it makes me. It's his voice, it's all myself, right? I doubt any moments of being. Just don't put yourself in that position where it has to affect you, you know, do you? He turned which side fully his fence, but yeah. Things moving forward for you.
Depends on what was happening that. I think we've had some interesting conversations.
Keep going, don't worry, it's all safe.
I have. So my request of meeting, well, I actually replied to. They request your meeting. Saying I was wanting to have a meeting, so.
They requested a meeting with us, we were refused. But it was all said and done, it was one of those out of town, so the other team that was.
Yeah, I was at that.
Were you?
Yeah.
What did you think about it?
We did not. I did, I think it was um. Not the greatest of me of meetings because we really didn't have any information going into it. And what we were trying to accomplish by meeting, um, so. But definitely guys, things, the conversation. Conversation is going, so um like I said, we're gonna. We're gonna meet with them, try to meet with them on the regular to and try to. Ask your team what's going on, who the stakeholders are, what kind of impact it's gonna have on Madison County? What impact it's gonna have on our re-council? I mean, I think it's mainly focused around the innovation um district that they have proposed, but. Of course, there was other. Other things at play as well, so that we can.
It was obvious, we had the potential investors, the cost review.
Yeah.
They did not.
Yeah.
As far as life, why should we make it is being looked at in our re-council? It's because he saw some of it is. They were presenting the property for some.
We found that for the investor, right?
That's it. Did you spend?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just. See the rest of.
But I think the regular meetings will be beneficial for for all parties. You know, just we keep in touch. Hopefully.
Do I need, should I need a partner in this?
Um, it's it's not a bad idea.
From the township perspective.
Yeah, I.
I'll try to make it.
Yeah, um, I don't.
There might be some times when I might not be able to.
Yeah.
Yes, we're trying to.
It it's kind of a meeting of what do you guys have going on, what do we have going on, you know, how this is gonna impact us, how we're gonna impact you. How can we work together, I mean, it's kind of the olive branch kind of thing. And these are those who've still staying around. Thanks, unless. The commissioners or the town书记, it doesn't matter.
Isn't that, I'm sorry, I'm I'm saying, but we wanna do everything we can at that, but allow Lord's army council to survive off of.
Yeah.
So if you don't agree.
Yeah, and as much, you know, we're gonna make that well aware of that. In a very professional way.
Yeah. But they're all still on the same.
And we're still working to get the utilities there, so we. Had quite a. Quite a few conversations.
I'm sure you get it, you know, since um.
So there's there's still options.
I say. Operationally. I just had this meeting today, my great.
Yeah.
No, and I mean, maybe able to serve those teams.
I I saw the agenda and. I don't know if there's already a depending. On it that is impactful for for sixteen months. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that just may be. We're gonna be making some. My leadership, like, certainly, like, that's here. So. Hopefully, there'd be very many officials.
Yeah, okay, we deserve our liability. That's why I said you keep up, but yeah, that's I would like to, but we are very relaxed, so you can read what they do, I'll do it, you know. Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Get the get the guts out of the door.
We're representing the county, the county, the county.
Yeah.
They're strong.
That's funny, like. Where's anyone?
There's only very, there's new.
Yeah.
You have one of them.
Yeah.
Five minutes.
And that's as far as.
Right, well, I see.
That's a good product.
At one time where we need to.
Done it yesterday.
Bring it in, out of stations.
Well, they don't, they're very bashful, it's not that, it got this.
White House is really.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah. It's still like a very much little thing, but.
Today, we see the.
I mean, they're trying to really.
Helping them work through. The best.
And they got a little wet yesterday, I mean. Yeah, or something else. It's no insulation.
They don't see big projects.
Yeah, nothing to really hurt.
Yeah.
And the volume of the dead. And the word. There may be an action across the involved right now, so doing is not. But the potential return to.
Well, I noticed to do that.
Raise that and get an understanding of what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think it's. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not wanting to weaken this around.
Yeah, I'm not ready to wave the white flag.
Yes, thanks. We have lots of. You know, it's in the Senate bill. The House. And there's my feeling.
Yeah, so you know, that's part of the, so the, you've synchronized meetings, so we get better on the shit then, you know. Whatever.
What's a tool?
Plan, maybe.
Well, I know what's a tool, it's the same.
The way you want to do something, so we're gonna have it.
It's the right.
We have a ticket to know the decision.
It was. Hey, it's a something.
So nice.
Hey. I I. Brian, is somebody, some, no.
Nothing good.
He's concerned. Can't start showing that he want, I won't do it.
Yes.
He's concerned with. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
I think that would be huge.
Yeah.
Just for other.
So. Yeah.
But they're gonna try.
Well, I think there's some other quicker alternatives.
Yeah.
Would you say?
Things that can be done.
That can work out.
To get things done.
First, we were asked about tickets for.
Now and so later. Kind of thing, so.
Did I not respond?
I don't think so.
You didn't, you didn't.
I just don't know it. Oh, no, no, I I. Just didn't know if I needed to. Spotted, even if you submit payment.
Or I.
They can pay at the door as long as I have the name, yeah.
You know, so you have. In a short timeframe, you're.
I I wrote the names down.
Ah, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Must not throw it, so. Oh. My, yes, the number of emails. I was, like, I really got into the ad emails where every evening I have to go through my emails, I guess it's just too much.
Oh, yeah. I think so, I think so, um, and it it could be a.
Is it at the butcher block?
Uh, some.
Is that so?
That's it.
A three-month process, but I think there's stuff that can be happened.
It's just something that ain't.
Yeah, it's not, it's not always.
Okay.
You know, it's not.
Make that.
See.
With you, I don't.
You have to be good judgment.
Yeah, absolutely, so that's gotta be moved forward regarding that something of this and.
No thumbs up on it.
And it's contingent, I'll say, yes, some.
Yeah, I criticized office.
The text.
Something three thing.
A little.
It's not even, it's okay, it's just caring, okay?
Yeah, you know, the ultimate. Maybe a.
You know, you know, that's that's any good.
What's that?
It's a nice citizen, right?
What can we do?
And like the same, like, it's like, oh, that's more in. Does anyone say next year, like, that, you know, and the fact. Because we have a separate capacity.
Well.
What's your hair, the body, still big all night.
Me time, working.
Yes. Sure, turn the gold, long-term gold, especially.
I received a message.
No, it's good, you don't have to buy it.
She says she's interested in learning more.
The majority of what I do, so you just put any problems, interpositions, so. What if you're.
Best, even if it's small thing.
There's a senate.
I often said, uh.
It's a kind of.
You probably want to submit that. They would ask, it was important to.
Yes, yes.
And I tried to do that. That's absolutely. Will there be a, an international committee?
We started, they're really gonna tell us.
Yeah.
I think tax, they illuminate somebody, but uh. Yeah, circle back, but it's just right there, it's gonna take time to get.
First, because this is working at.
You know.
They, no, this conversation is sensible.
They returned.
Give me eleven more. I'm moving, I'm moving.
I'm moving something around.
Yeah.
So it's hard to say.
Well, sometimes.
Yeah, but I.
Just give you that.
Any anything that.
But also the.
That's right, that's a great one, I'm sure.
I know.
But, did you guys call each other before you?
We don't have to call.
Picked out your outfits.
ESPN.
We know.
ESPN. If you're watching sports, yes. It always gets a laugh. It's worth saying.
We wanted to happen in our system.
Hopefully, he's. Efficient. Right now, right now. That's my time.
We're in speeding, we're back to making. There's a new child service. How are you?
Morning. Right, we go ahead and get started, we have Nick Davis joining us from Senator Bernie Moreno's office, how are you?
Thank you, doing well, how are you guys this morning, Bernie?
Well, thank you.
Well, thanks for having us this morning, um, my name is Nick Davis, I'm the Central Ohio Regional Director for Senator Bernie Moreno. Um, so I brought my colleague, he's been a central region representative this morning. So we're we're both um relatively nearby, uh, Taylor's just from Urbana, um, close by and I live in Bell Fountain, so. Took about forty-five minutes this morning, wasn't that bad, it's a beautiful drive through uh through ghost country, I'd say. But I appreciate you finding the time to meet with us this morning, um, so kind of the the purpose of our our visit today is first to introduce ourselves. Um, to the uh, um, to the county, I know, um, it was your head, we were able to meet a few weeks ago and. And um, hope they're doing a trigger as well, uh, but especially for the other two of you as well to introduce ourselves on behalf of Senator Moreno. Um, talk with you a little bit about issues that are facing Madison County today and that the the three of you are dealing with. And um, talk about ways that uh Senator Moreno and his team could be of assistance to you in the county. Uh, so just a quick little background about myself before I turn it over to Taylor. So like I said, I live in uh Bell Fountain right now, I'm in Logan County, um, sit on a city council there. Uh, I am originally from Logan County, went to Ohio State, when I was uh um in college, I was able to to help Paul and President Trump's uh twenty sixteen campaign. Uh, from there, I uh worked in the state house for a little bit and then when I graduated, moved off to D C and served with his previous administration for about three years. Um, so I I did advance for the Secretary of the Interior and for the Vice President, so got to spend a few years traveling around the country with the President, Vice President and. A few cabinet emburths, which was of course a really awesome experience. Um, after I um, after the administration ended, I I moved back home to Bell Fountain. I started working for a real estate development company that revitalized the downtown called Small Nation. Which I I managed all the um community development consulting work for um for the team, so. Actually got to know um folks like Andy Warnock from the Westwood, uh, Westwood Collective very well. Uh, I know that he's uh working a lot in Hillier, but also working here in London as well, um, and I I think that that he's doing some some great stuff and. Um, love being able to work with him, then uh we were able to host a few folks from, um, is it the um, the eighteen thirteen group in the in downtown? So got to uh got to meet some of them and then host them in Bell Fountain, um, chat with them a little bit about London, which was um really nice and and really helpful. But uh, uh, got to know Senator Moreno really well for the last couple of years, um, Taylor and I were both. Uh, his county captains for for Logan County and for Champagne County and um, yeah. Got to, like I said, got to know him well, knew that he was going to do a wonderful job as as a senator, so. After he got elected, he um invited both Taylor and I, Taylor and I to join his team and um. It was uh hard to turn down his wonderful opportunity, so um took the chance and I started with him about two and a half months ago. So I've really enjoyed uh being on the team so far, getting to go around and meet meet with folks such as yourself. Uh, we uh we oversee thirteen counties for um uh for the Senator. So if you're familiar with the the one Columbus region, for example, we. So if you're familiar with the, the one Columbus region, for example, we have all of those Logan counties, plus Champagne County, Department of County. Um, so, uh, that's, that's me in a nutshell, I'll turn it over to Taylor for, for a second.
Good morning Commissioners, uh, as Nick said, uh, I'm the central regional representative for, uh, Senator Bernie Moreno's office, I am an Urbana guy, so. For you Red Raiders in the room, I apologize, don't hold that against me, uh, but it's good to be here in, in Madison County, uh, my, my, my previous. Uh, jobs with actually the state of Ohio, uh, I was a legislative aide for the state rep, uh, representative, the, uh, three county area of Shelby, Champagne, Logan County, to Barlow. Uh, so got to work really closely with Representative Stewart, uh, Senator Reynolds, and, and former Senator Hackett at times as well. Uh, and got to know their staffs, and, and Madison County is very blessed to have a great team of folks at the state level, I think, uh, representing you guys and your priorities as well. Uh, like I said, we're here to be a resource for you all, uh, especially at the federal level, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of action happening, as you could tell, uh, uh, hopefully a lot of good, we think. Uh, but there comes, but that comes with some ambiguity, as change is being made right now, new administration, new Congress, uh, obviously their, uh, budget talks are gonna restart. Uh, we're gonna get back on, on that timeline here by about September, I think is the goal. Um, and I realized too, we were here a few weeks ago about bio digester, uh, we have no updates on that at this point. Uh, but I can assure you that our DC, uh, folks, our DC staff are, are well aware of it. Uh, but we haven't heard anything from them yet, they're kind of drinking from a fire hose as well, because Congress is doing their job by going through a lot of what. Um, uh, the previous administration, previous Congress had enacted, uh, whether it be through the Inflation Reduction Act, whatever that meant, uh, or other laws. That that would pass, unfortunately, that might have created situations that have adverse effects for you folks here on the ground, whether it be the bio digester, uh, solar farms, uh, so. I said, glad to be here this morning, and, and we're hopeful that, that, you know, anything you need, we're, we're gonna be able to, at least really, really help to, to Senator, his team up in DC. So that's our, that's our main priority as a field staff, during the stack. Usually field staff is kind of. Um, I, I, I say police and fire, I probably should not use that, but we don't, obviously, we don't fight fires, we're gonna protect communities, and due to the, the, the work that fire departments and police departments do, but. You know, when there's an issue, we're the ones that, that show up, you know, we're the ones that are called, um, especially at the federal level, that means that warrants Senator's attention, so. Uh, we wanna be proactive and visible, uh, to folks like you guys here in Madison County, and the other eleven, twelve counties in the central region. So that something does come up, whether it be a light of bio digester like we were here a few weeks ago, or any other issue, uh, you know who's gonna show up and what face of name, you know, I'd care, so. Good to be here this morning, thank you.
Thanks for being here, we appreciate it.
Yeah, so, I'd love to turn it over to the three of you, would love to, uh, hear a little bit more about you, and, um, like I said, issues that, uh, that you guys are beyond.
Well, I, I have a comment, so.
Sure.
Um. You know, the tariffs. I'm, I'm definitely for that, you know, I can't wait for Liberation Day tomorrow. But we had a business that just backed out. Uh, they, they bought a big warehouse, just about a mile away from here. And one of the reasons they backing out now is because they're worried what's gonna happen to tariffs, what do we do? You know, that, how many jobs they would, would that have created?
Two hundred.
Right, that's, that's almost three hundred jobs in a, in a small county, that's, that's pretty good, never gonna be, what kind of?
Italian, Italian, um, uh, they, uh, manufacture transmission, uh, cable, wire, and wires.
Sure.
So, yeah, they, they, uh, looked at, I mean, they, they're scared enough to where they purchased the building for, I think it was about sixteen million. Um, but with the uncertainty and the terrorists that are coming in, they, they decided to pull back their, uh, investment here.
Interesting.
And I'm assuming it's because they have to import the wire.
Okay. So they're.
Right, so that's.
The raw material.
Right.
Okay.
So, you know, for us, you know, like I say, almost three hundred jobs in, in this little county is, is, you know, pretty significant, you know?
Yeah, I, um, totally understand your, understand your concerns, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to hear that that happened. Um, I can't speak for the administration necessarily, um, a, a lot of what my personal understanding of, of the tariffs are, is first and foremost. President Trump loves to use them as a negotiating tool, to get what he wants from, from other countries. Um, so that's, that's first and foremost what, what he's probably using them for, um. But, uh, I, I also understand that he's looking at a, um, a short term pain for, for long term gain, whether that's the right way to look at it or a wrong way to look at it. I'm not smart enough to, to know, um, but, uh, you know, we, we would love if, if you guys have some more information about the company, about specifically why they backed out, I would love if, if you could send that over to us. And, um, we can pass it up to, to Senator, uh, Senator Moreno and, and see if, if there's anything that he might be able to, to do to either change their minds, or. Um, at least be aware of the situation.
We know the name of the business, by the way.
Uh, De Angeli Provolite, talked, I mean, we only talked to Jobs Ohio.
Okay.
They offered incentives and everything to.
Right.
Okay.
And it was already announced. Uh, they're gonna do the big announcement, it's USA event, May.
Okay.
International, so, I mean, it was nothing big thing, yeah, so he was excited.
I'm shocked.
Basically, no.
So, uh, yeah, I would reach out, I, I don't feel comfortable being, reaching out to the company to ask if they have the information passed along, but. Looking out to Ohio.
Sure.
Uh, to, to, cause, yeah, they, they were offering incentives to the state.
Have you heard of any other similar situations?
This is the first, yeah, truthfully, I think we met with Jobs Ohio a few weeks ago, and they were telling us, um, kind of the opposite, they were having. Uh, many companies from, from Canada and, and other, uh, countries as well, reaching out to them. Um, about potentially, uh, moving into the United States, specifically the Columbus region, um, because of the tariffs. So, uh, I haven't really heard of, of a situation like that yet.
Yeah, we have a, we have a small business on the west side of Champagne County that they are getting a lot of calls from Canadian companies, cause we're in the food processing. Um, and food, or, you know, hydroponic growing, uh, space, so there are apparently are a lot of Canadian companies that are looking to invest in suppliers for those types of. Uh, for their products, uh, food processor, processing of some sort of that. Yeah, this is the first for us, I'm, I'm shocked that one's long partnership hasn't been.
Well, this is I learned this, uh, it was last Monday evening.
Contact.
That's about all.
Contact.
They had the rats legitimately, and they were told directly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're, I mean, let's be honest, if you're a company here in the States, that you're importing a lot of raw material to make your product, to be either sold here in the States or, or even elsewhere. There's gonna be disruption, I mean, that, I, I don't think that the administration or even, and Senator Moreno has made that very clear as well, there's gonna be some disruption. Um, it's just a matter of hopefully. You know, other nations, other countries coming to the table to make it a fair playing field for the, for the United States and our market. Uh, here, cause that hasn't been the case, at least in the eyes of the administration, so. Good to know that. Three hundred jobs.
It's two sixty six.
Sixty six, you know.
I mean, I just know what I have to talk. Uh, I'll tell my, right now.
That's right.
And it's always under, under promise, over delivered, so.
Right.
Right, so.
So.
I, I know you said you don't have an update on the, the biodigester situation. Uh, you mentioned the Inflation Reduction Act, any, any insight into what's, what might be pursued as far as that's concerned, or how it might relate to. Current or proposed green energy projects?
We haven't heard anything specific, um, of what I have, what we've seen just through the channel, the DC chatter, is that everything's on the table in terms of getting axed. Um, there, there are the powers that be that are lobbying heavily in DC to keep some of their renewable energy. Roughly renewable energy incentives and provisions, uh, I don't know if that means biodigesters, I don't know if that means solar, I don't know that wind, or. Anything else that they're looking to do, um, but, uh, our understanding is that everything's on the table for. Review and all the chopping block, uh, and it's a matter of what remains, cause the dynamic being that the House has a very slim majority. Um, you know, likely they're not gonna start from scratch, which means they're not gonna need sixty votes in the Senate. Uh, but it would require all fifty three members in the Senate to stick together to an extent, maybe afford to lose a couple. Um, so the dynamics are a bit interesting on the congressional side, and, and I think the administration is cognizant of that. So we're. Who knows, we didn't think we were gonna have another, I guess you can say, kick the cane down the road CR in March, it's kind of rosy until it won, welcome to DC, I guess. As we're learning quickly, um, and I haven't gotten an update from what the state level is looking to do with the, the couple of, uh, bills that Senator Reynolds and Representative Stewart have introduced, I believe the budget. Just actually got dropped today, the sub bill, uh, for the, uh, the House version of state budget, and then they'll do an omnibus. Um, they'll entertain amendments this week, and then probably pass it out of the committee of the chamber next week, if I'm accurate, so. But I, I couldn't receive any updates from their staff, they're obviously a little bit busy being the partnership almost, so. Yeah.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. Any other questions, gentlemen?
What's up, Nate?
Comments?
What's up, Nate?
Hello.
Uh, met with Congressman Kerry's staff.
Oh, yeah.
Couple of weeks ago, I meet with them fairly regularly, um, we were in line for four hundred million dollars, uh, for a new sheriff's complex. Um, they relayed to me that. They may have to resubmit that, so, uh, any support that can be provided. Sure, um.
Was that, uh, um, the CDS request?
Yeah.
Your mark.
Yes.
Yeah. Were you looking at fiscal year twenty five for that one?
Yes.
Okay, so due, because of the CR, any of the presidential directed spending, um, requests kind of got pushed off to the side for the fiscal year twenty twenty five?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we are, uh, as of yesterday, actually, starting to take the quest for, um, presidential directed spending, uh, for, um, the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty six. Um, and I can send you that information if you wanna go online and then submit that there, but we'll also pass that along, uh, as well. Um, and, and then, uh, on that note, um, Alex, the Trump, who's our Deputy State Director, he gave me a call this morning. Um, that, uh, they actually received a technical correction request, um, for, um, uh, uh, twenty, fiscal year twenty four.
Um.
Um, brand that you guys received.
Right.
Um, so he just wanted me to double check with, with you guys, uh, I know that there was a, a change in recipient for, was it sewer, or what was it exactly?
Water.
Water?
Yeah.
Okay, um, and then he just wanted to. Uh, he, he said he knew this morning, I let, I let him know that, that you were in here starting at eight or eight thirty this morning.
Yeah.
Um, but any background information that, that you can provide on, um, what's reasoning behind the, the change in, um, recipients? Um, is, is the scope of the project changing at all?
Um. S- somewhat, I mean, it was, it, the issue was basically a timeline.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where the project was moving forward, and, um, to keep it moving forward, bills had to be paid, so we paid the bills. Uh, but then the, the dollars came in, and the timelines didn't match up, so. Um, that project is a phase project, so the initial phase is done, but the second phase, they're ready to begin, which is water service to a. Low or moderate income community, um, called Lafayette Project, maybe even drove through it earlier today. So the slight scope changed, but not really.
Sure.
Uh, as far as the recipient goes, um, during this time period, we, uh, jointly formed a, uh, sixty one nineteen San Terracine Water Districts. Uh, which consists of Plain City, London, and Madison County, so they, they're handling, that is in their service area. So they would be the recipient of those dollars, and not Madison County, so.
That's the issue we're getting more.
Yes, yeah, so, but I can send you all that information.
Yeah, that'd be great, um, he, he wanted me to pass along that, uh, we're more than happy to continue supporting that, making sure that you do get that funding for the EPA.
Yeah.
Um, just, uh, just wanted to get that clarifying information, so we can pass that along to the, the folks in EPA.
Yeah, yeah, initially, they wanted to pay down the debt with it, that they borrowed on the project, or we borrowed on the project, but I transferred over.
Sure.
Um, but that didn't seem to. Be something, wasn't. Something that they were gonna be able to do.
Sure.
Um, so therefore, we looked at, they looked at that second phase of the project, so.
Sure, was it reimbursement, or was it? I didn't. I would say off line.
Well, it was, I, I don't know if you'd call it a reimbursement or not, it's just when those grand dollars came down.
Got you.
Didn't, didn't align with the project and the project cost.
Got you.
Literally in that time, so, it was, uh, you know. We definitely don't want to see, don't want to see them lose those dollars. Cause there's, there's significant impact to the community, um, and economic development there, so. So that's one, and then going back to, uh, the sheriff's complex, I mean, that's, that four million dollars, it's, it's pretty important to get that project.
Mm-hmm.
Um. To fruition, so.
And I would encourage you to keep working with Josh and Kerry's office.
Yeah.
And, and Nick will send you the, the link, the form that we're having projects fill out, um, so that we can, we can start going through these.
Yeah.
These requests as soon as possible, we're trying to get a little ahead of the law on these.
Yeah.
Knowing that there's gonna probably be an influx, cause the last two CRs didn't have any. Um, uh, congressional year spending.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had a, um, uh. An issue slash opportunity pop up in last year, this year, that we've been working through with the state government on, uh, conveyance of some property, so it's delaying the projects. Um, at least a year, and by the time we get things ironed out with the state, we'll probably be looking at construction at twenty twenty six. So that might. Be in better alignment with any other.
Yeah.
Federal dollars, you know, I, I'd love to, uh, braid dollars together, so, um, you know, anything else that's. Out there that we can utilize to bring that total investment, that capital expenditure down, um, where it's less of a burden on the county, sure would be appreciated.
Absolutely. I guess I'll, I'll address the other open in the room, the, uh, the, the solar project, what's the update on that, how, what is, what's happening there?
Uh, I think we're still waiting on, uh, the, um, Supreme Court.
So that's Supreme Court, okay.
Yeah.
Our brief, reply brief was due to, is due today.
Ah.
And, uh, and I guess about a few months from now, they'd expect more.
Got you. Well, yeah, in the sense it's important. So that, so, kind of, good to know.
Very good, anything else, Phil, number? David, everything? All right, appreciate you coming in, thank you very much, shooting you one, thank you again.
Didn't know that there were four arguments recently in the Kingwood, that solar case, so just wait on that decision, so I'll do it in the top. Oh, no, sorry.
Yep. Julie, if you wanna join us up front?
Sure.
Very good.
Just want to give an update, uh, explanation, overview. Of, uh, the ground preservation program, we did have, uh, we have nine applications for this year, I did bring maps, if I, if I can show. Uh, one more map. Because, you know, I always want to make sure everyone's at the speed, so we've, uh. We do an annual program for state, uh, Ohio Department of Agriculture to purchase agricultural easements, the United funds vary from year to year. This year, we have a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. And, uh, landlords apply for this program, so, and, uh, cause they wish to see their farm currently stay in agriculture, so it does go with the land, it is perpetual. Um, the management commissioners will co-hold the easement with the state, uh, mass and soil water, we monitor the easements every year. We file a report, so we can, and we communicate with the landowners, that way, if there's a change of ownership, we can also make sure the new owner understands the restrictions on the property. Uh, it can be used any way for agriculture, like agricultural buildings can be built, but non-agriculture, non-commercial things are restricted. Uh, you're allowed to have a homestead on it, um, but, uh. So it's a, you know, it's a great, it is a great program, and people use the funds to either improve their funding operations, or they use it to pay down debt, or they use it to go on a vacation, I mean, the. However, they wanna use the funds, it's up to them. Uh, so what you see of this map is Madison County and Clark County, so Clark County has to come to Land Trust, which is a nonprofit. And she provided me with this map, which I thought was a great visual, and I, so I just went ahead and used their map. And I highlighted the. Farms here, those farms are still in progress, anything that's hollow, those are easements that we've closed on, the ones that highlighted, there are the seven more yet to go. And then, of course, we hope to fund another one this year, and we call those pending easements, um, when, when, uh, when they haven't been closed on yet. So I did provide a, uh. So I did provide a uh, list of names, I don't know if you had a chance to see those names, but those are the farms that are being applied. Now, what we do is um, we take the number one farm per landowner, so one farmer may have three farms, but we only submit as a hard copy of the number one farm, the rest are called electronically filed, it saves us a little bit of time, a little bit of paperwork, we don't have enough funds to fund all these farms, uh, but we do want to have a hard copy of who's have the best farms for for farm. Uh, we have a ranking system, and I wait till the Department of Agriculture checks my work before I say who's number one, because sometimes a point can be flipped, cause I meant, I selected the wrong drop down box, and and so we just want to make sure we don't get somebody excited and then, oh, I'm sorry about my mistake, um, but, so feel pretty good about the program, just didn't know if you had any questions for me, but this is purely state funds, the commissioners don't have any independent dollars, I mean, some nonprofits, for example, may fundraise and bring in more dollars to this program, but right now this is purely funded by the state, the landowners are agreeing to take a partial offer, so, like for example, we have a farm that's worth worth uh, three hundred and twenty three thousand dollars, and we had full funds available. Uh, but he's he's willing to accept a hundred and seventy two thousand, a partial offer, because he wants the program. And the reason why we only have a hundred and seventy two thousand is because um, this program's been around for twenty plus years. The set funds has been being the same at six point four million for the whole state, but now we have up to like twenty seven people applying the same pot of money, so our little piece of the pie is being smaller. But still, we have people interested in the program and um, and there you go, I think it speaks because we have very productive soils, and we have a lot of uh, people who believe in their, that it's a viable way, and they like the way of life, so. The end.
Very good. Thank you for that background, so the one hundred and seventy four is our county's share of the six point four million?
Right, that's what they said we are allocated from that pot.
Okay, and you you might have said this, but how, so you said the top landowner has accepted the one seventy two, if if awarded? What happens?
All these landowners understand what's available, they understand what theoretically their easement could have been worth if we had the full funds. So um, each person is willing to accept that offer, otherwise they wouldn't apply for the program.
Right, so how many can be chosen? Oh, just just one, okay.
And you're still trying to keep them together, am I correct?
Right, so how and how how our ranking works is you do get rewarded if you're near other protected farms, cause we like to build a cohesive block of ag versus having them all scattered around.
Any other questions, Julia?
Well, I guess, so all of these parcels, this has come from one a year being awarded for the last twenty years?
Some years they had almost a million dollars, that was a good year. But, you know, so we usually we have uh, usually we have three hundred thousand.
How do we get a million dollars?
Federal funds, we apply for federal's too. So we do have a federal application in the hopper, we haven't heard yet if we're going to get funding for that, but we do apply for federal dollars too.
Thank you.
I have a resolution, Friday, uh, a resolution supporting Madison County's participation in the local agricultural easement purchase program.
They'll move.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion? None heard, roll call please.
Mr. Shad?
Yes.
Doctor Sneak?
Yes.
Mr. Waffles?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we can move into our open session a little early, if anybody has any questions, comments, now is the time.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, come up here.
You you can if you'd like.
Okay. Say you have to talk.
Okay. Looks like you have a lot of documents to pass up.
This matter. Go on, man.
Before you get started, would you just state your name for the record?
Uh, Brad Roffus, uh, President of Four Fivers. He's a big screen breaker.
Thank you.
It's in the line, he has counsel, so.
Hmm?
Right.
Are you guys ready? So the first of this, um, would be this exhibit right here that has a syllabus.
Yep.
Uh, and that's the deserving general, Davio's opinion, um, on the right away, what hours, what has transpired there?
Yep.
And I sent in a protest, uh, I am a fiber construction company, I own fiber network. Um, I have done, I've been in this business uh, twenty some odd years. Uh, I've been one of the top sales guys in the country for one of the largest carriers for many years, selling to the largest wireless carriers, understand infrastructure very, very well. And I'm also a resident of Madison County. Um, again, I'm missing another full protest in to the RP, you'll see this um, right here, this exhibit, where it says the instruction specification just of the RP that was issued out by Miami Valley Association of Fiber Association. Um, during the time prior this, I was in, did consultation, this is the email right here, that verifies certain information in here that was not disclosed in this RP. And he knew about it, um, and then came to a meeting um, at with the engineers and with Jeff Gamraff. Um, who was retained at my company as well, many years, um, but not during that timeframe, that they failed to disclose, my understanding, cause I was not part of that meeting, failed to disclose that to the county at that point in time, about plowing the specifications, the new changes, what we found out about ODOT, um, plowing in the right of way. Um, things like that, what the county was requesting, which was not in writing in the right of way from it, like GPRs, there was an open discussion at that time, and that was not disclosed to the potential vendors and potential guys that were going to be building construction companies. And then if you go back, and I highlighted a few things here, um, if you go to one, two, three, with the pricing pages, he even had this, this has come off his website, but if you go to um, it it's my understanding, this is ARCA funded as well?
No, the, as I explained in the previous email.
Yep.
We fell under the uh, constraints uh, of ARCA dollars for what was awarded, so that money went into the general fund as revenue displacement. So the general fund is is providing the the financing to this project, now is that ARCA dollar lumped in there?
Yes. Okay. So if you look at the, this is the RP that was submitted out to what Mabaca called qualified visitors, okay? A- as you can see, part of the specifications of in a in a public bid, right, has to be clear to fight, define of what the quantity is, what it is. Um, things that have been higher than the RP, and it's my understanding, and I've talked, and I know the CEO of the other company that's evolved here, and I've talked with him. And he's like, well, they can plot, I'm like, oh no, they can't, so I don't know, I I I FOIA'd and then public directors request numerous of them to to Mabaca, and they have failed since last July to provide me that information, so I only vote I know, right, from what I hear, that's hearsay, but that's what I hear, right? Cause I'm very well connected in this industry, is there's no, anybody that's trying to bid on this, there's nothing in here that says here's your quantity, right? And then, but yet they're supposedly, another vendor called Ohio Board, which was part of it, sent me the list of here's the spreadsheet of the total dollar amount, right? Didn't specify, well, did they bid on splicing, did they bid on this, there was no vetting process of anything out there. Um, I'm, what was that dollar amount, right, was it was it all, was it part, was it one, right? It wasn't fair and equitable to every potential bidder out there, plus Mabaca decided not to let Four Fivers bid on the project. Um, it's a long history, but I had a very severe TDI during that time, very bad car accident, uh, with under care of neurosurgeons. Um, you know, a year ago, and so I'm still recovering from it. Um, I'm still under the care of OSU, but it is what it is, um, I'm doing the best I can with the business I can do, right? But here, if you go back to the very back, um, very last page, we're ahead of the map. When I had kind of highlighted right up there, second sentence, engineering plans will be sufficient. I don't believe that to be true, based on, Mr. I and I were hired originally by Mabaca. We originated the pre routing, pre surveying and things, uh, for before this project even became fruition. And then we were hired to do the engineering, things changed at that point in time, during that process, during certain things. And when you read the email, the third one, which is this, the email right here, that I alerted Mr. Sage on April twentieth, twenty twenty three. Um, and another one's that, you know, there's ODOT things in here, I'm uncertain, because there's no clarification. I'm wondering what can, can't be done. So, and then at the very last page, I put my best estimate based off the information that we had at that point in time, because there was nothing that the county had validated, right, this is what has to be done in the public right of way. And then in ODOT, we know what ODOT specs are in district six, is that correct?
Yes.
That's it, that we've worked in all districts, and district six says no problem in the right of way, has to be directional boring only. So when you do that, that adds enormous amounts of cost on you, right, just because of the inherent nature of it. So when I hear that potential bidders are being awarded things, and then or contractors be awarded things, and then other contractors are allowed to bid on certain things, right? With no factual evidence of saying not complying, was not complying bidder, right? Um, how is that fair and transparent? As as a government agency to a company like Four Fivers and everybody else that bid on this project? Because now, that's acceptable, is if if I if I was awarded the project, or another company's awarded the project, and they're saying I gave you six point three million dollars to build it, which there's no way it can be done for that, right, I mean, it's just inherently impossible. Um, that's going to bankrupt that company. And I don't think it's fair to that other company that doesn't know this information, and that wasn't disclosed this information, especially knowing this information that was sent to Mr. um Sage from Mabaca that ran the RP process, is that how can this RP be fair and equitable for a building perspective? And get an honest price to taxpayer dollars that are out there, having all this information in place? And not disclosing it, and nowhere in this RP does it say the process that you have to hundred percent more. And that's, I mean, I'm just, it it's very, to me, very troublesome that we're putting, you know, millions of dollars of taxpayer money at stake here, and then the construction side of it. Um, I know Ohio Bay's evolved, I know Tim Burles has been very, very well worked in for twenty some odd years. But when you look at a network, and it was considered an open network, okay? That's considered that other companies can come in and build off of that network, and buy an IRU fiber, and then that's not how it's designed, okay? I, there's, you have to have multiple conduits, two conduits doesn't do it, okay, just doesn't do it. Now, if I'm the sole owner of my my conduits, then yes, I can do it, but there's no way another carrier is going to come in and allow somebody else to mess with that fiber. Cause now you're jeopardizing downtime, you're jeopardizing, you know, cutting off customers. Um, and then you say, well, I'm an IRU, X amount of fibers to this company, I'm next one, and then we've got a spare conduit, right? What's that spare conduit, right, cause if you back it to fiber to the home with that, I mean, I can blow fiber all the way down the road all night, probably, but how do I get it back to that that bolt, right? So, me personally, I think this RP needs to be reissued. Uh, and and allow other companies to offer fiber to the home to create competition instead of just going and partnering with one company. Because right now you have spectrum, right, that's coming out, that's if you're building in rural areas. Um, and all you have is the phone company typically in the rural areas, especially run run it by Rosedale, all you have is Frontier. Then all of a sudden, I have fiber in the ground now, and I've got a hundred gig on my backbone, but I can't get to it, it's across the street, right? And that's failing me to be able to monitor that network and grab a hold and do certain things to my network that I need to do, cause I'm not going to light a network up blind. In in my business, you don't, you never do that. So I'm also asking is what's the status of the process of getting a regular permission in Madison County? So, tell me, sure.
So we're uh, working with the engineer right now on on the policy, basically, um, because the concerns. Excuse me, initially, the engineer wanted more, like he wanted boring everywhere to avoid um, drainage issues, tile, that sort of thing. Um, but we we know that uh, it makes it pretty um, not necessarily feasible from a business standpoint to be able to directionally bore everything, because as you showed here, you know, the the cost is almost twice as much. So it really limits the amount of fiber that's that can be built here in Madison County. So the engineer has been in discussions with the county commissioners on on how we may be able to loosen those standards up a little bit and allow some plowing. And if we allow plowing, what is the responsibility of the company? If they do cause damage, if that damage isn't um, you know, found for a year or two later, um, you know, what's the ramifications there, who's responsible? So I would say we're still in discussions with the with the county engineer on on what that policy is going to be.
Okay. And you would like me to help you with that, cause we correctly for wrong, we we plowed twenty seven miles in Madison, or Union County, thereabouts?
Thereabouts.
Um, one tile issue since then. Tom from Union County is very satisfied with us. Uh, ODOT, we've done all the work down one sixty one, done all that, very satisfied with us, right? Um, we don't, we we did Clark County, um, many hundreds, tens of hundreds of thousands of feet over there, both ODOT County and different jurisdictions, very satisfied with us, right?
Seven over there.
Right.
Statements is flat there.
And I would welcome that input.
Because what you want, what you have to have is, like, when I when I also read on on the RP, that the engineering firm from Mabaca, right, which and I, well, I don't know, but Ed knows it personally, in the state of Ohio, you can't claim to be an engineering firm if you're an engineer, right, with a P A, PS stamp or uh, or a PD stamp. Well, they hired a company um, to do, we originally did all the engineering initially, right? And then, then the things changed, and Mabaca hasn't paid Four Fivers one dollar, right, so there's going to be a lien placed against the network day one, the amount of money in engineering, and that, the late fees are adding up. The amount of money in engineering and that, the late fees are adding up quite a bit, okay? Um, then Maveka didn't pay one dollar to buy to Four Fibers. To do all this hundred and nine miles, you know exactly, a hundred and nine miles, a hundred and twenty-five miles. Um, of engineering, doing pre-callouts, doing pre-this, pre-that. And then as you can read the email right here, right? Maveka is not following the process, right? I told him, hey, it's gonna be an additional dollar to a foot, right? To do all the kind of engineering that needs to be done, not the small fee. So I don't know what you're hearing from Maveka. I don't know what he's saying, but they owe me a lot of money, okay? And there's gonna be mechanics in place in the network day one. Because if they failed to pay, because he also has my intellectual property, our DWG, uh, DWG files, our AutoCAD files, that he's never returned. Then he also sent those to official, um, which I know very well, because he called me up and he said, hey, I have your DWG files, Brett, what are you gonna be doing with them? I said, keep them, because that's a different issue at a different time. Cause he was happy to return those um, to Four Fibers and has failed to since then. But I believe that me being a resident, I own the equipment, right? I have plenty of equipment and you know that. It's state-of-the-art equipment, right? I build solar farms, right? You know, I've got millions of dollars in equipment, right? I build the infrastructures for the solar farms, all of Madison County, all throughout, you know, the state, put the big MV cables and put the fiber in. Um, so it's not like we have cheap equipment, you know, we're not just some Joe Schmo's small contracting company out there. And I went into this business to try to figure out how to, I know the sales side, I knew the operations side, I knew the electronics side. I got into the construction side and the Verizon Wireless, and they're doing small cells when the Senate bill came out. And you know why I smell her, cause they're your outside law firm and Greg Dunn, I know Greg for, you know, twenty-five years. And the easy work at Time One and Rice to work to on the sales side. So I I know the industry very, very well. And I was part of that Senate bill, the um, the right away, things were happening. So I'm very familiar with that. And Ed's got, you know, thirty, thirty-five plus years in engineering. We're local here, we do it, right? We we get it, we know it. Um, and we do, and we make sure the equipment that we have is, they say, well, we're gonna do the asphalt, right? What equipment they can use for asphalt? You know, some guy gonna go out there and stake that, because what they do in today's world is they're gonna believe a directional drill or they're gonna believe a proud guy that was adept, right? It doesn't happen that way. Because how do you know that that fiber is a three foot, right? How do I know that it's fourteen foot off the edge of pavement? Sometimes it can't be fourteen foot off the edge of pavement, but how do you know? So we've invested in some very, very sophisticated equipment. Cause I'm sure you're aware of what's going out on Madison Fields today, the solar project. So we were brought in to do the remediation with Keewee. We did all the, we have all the 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 surveying equipment, sub centimeter accuracy. Uh, we have all that, that's what we use for our own asphalt. Uh, and our network's gonna also for our customers' asphalt. And there's not too many companies out there that have that sophisticated equipment. There's not too many people have a million and a half dollar plow, right? That sits there to put that in the ground, plus three other plows that could put the fiber in the ground. Um, and you know, JT twenty-fours, you know, those types of, that type of quality equipment. So all I'm asking is, one, to have the RFP reissue. That verifies what the process is, cause no one's gonna know what that price is, right? That that is susceptible to a potential, right? And you can't put, lay that on the notice of a contractor. And plus you can't lay the notice on the citizens of the county, right? Well, it might be six million or it might be fourteen million, right? We don't know. It's a very strict process, because I can guarantee you that I can come within, you know, a half a million dollars of what that project cost is gonna be. We've done enough of it. Um, trust me, I've done all of the Maveka stuff, I did the Springboro stuff, I did the Dayton stuff, I did all that stuff. And then he came to me and asked me to do the original bid and do everything and create the RFPs. And then there there was an issue between Maveka and Four Fibers during, when I had my bad accident. That he was made aware of. And obviously, he didn't, even I talked with Clark County, the administration there. I've talked, talked, talked to Clark County, the engineer, and he failed to disclose that as well, that information that I gave him, right? And then also, I know for a fact that this information wasn't disclosed to you guys prior to the RFP. Because he went to a meeting and he felt it was best interest not to bring it to your guys' attention. So this predates the RFP, very factual, very in writing. Why was this disclosed? We can build the map for you guys. We can help. I know Tim, I know everybody very well, right? Like, if I was gonna do it, I'd be slapping a couple of extra conduits in for myself, right? I'd be doing fiber to the home. Um, great competition, what's that do for the the citizens, right? Drive down cost creates some company want, doesn't wanna do it, right? And creates a poor service or whatever, gets competition in the marketplace. Um, plus other vendors, right? Would would wanna come in as well, like an Altifire, I know the CEO there very well.
Yeah, I met with Altifire last week.
Yeah, so I I know those guys very, very well. Um, you know, there's other people that wanna come in, right? And so when you create that type of competition, that creates your service levels to go up for you, for the citizens of the county. And also, when you start attracting larger businesses, right? It's it's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when, right? Like, some of my largest customers, like the limited brands, you know, J D Morgan Chase, Bank One, the Verizon Wireless, T-Mobile. You know, they're, those guys are five nines, right? Ninety-nine point nine, ninety-nine percent, you know, reliability on a fiber network. And that's what you want to build. Now, you can't do it all the way that it's designed. And you're still not gonna be able to do it unless you have dual entrances in certain electronics. But they're inherent nature, you wanna plan for that, because you guys are, we're on the edge of Columbus, right? The second fastest growing city in the Midwest. When you lay that amount of network in the ground, do it right. You know, this is the back. Um, you know, when you start attracting, cause as you know, Dublin, right? One of the things that they did from an economic growth perspective in Dublin was they went to like Ohio Health. And they would give them strands of fiber. You build that hospital in my community, I will give you strands of fiber. And think about the revenue it generates to the county and to the city and the tax base for that, right? They can sit there and talk about this is the value add, right? Because everybody knows what it costs to build fiber. And operate fiber, but when you have a clean network, a good network, that's the key. Because then we can guarantee your S, your service level agreements, your meantime to respond, your meantime to repair. And all of all the valuable assets of an S service level agreement. So all I ask is take that into consideration. You know, I I'm a citizen of the county, I'm here to help, I I I've offered my help, right? I was part of the original engineering process, right? And I was booted off after I had my TBI. So.
Yeah, I think any input that you can provide on where other places where you plowed did not really have, you know, incidents. Or places you did plow and had problems, you know, so we can help um, define policy. You need valuable information.
Yeah, we 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 plowed, we plowed in, what Circleville, whatever county, Laking County, with that, that is.
Big white.
Big white. We plowed, um, Clark, Clark County, Union County. Um.
Get ready to plow in Champaign County.
Yeah, Champaign County now, um. Both ODOT districts, then the same ODOT district that's down in Springboro and all that area in Dayton, that's Warren County, but we never plowed there. Um, we've had one hit. One tile. And you never know, right? Until after the rain or whatever, and immediately you jump in and you fix it, right? Um, but when you bore, you're gonna have bigger issues. Because you don't, you don't open the surface up, you don't leave that surface tension to the surface, right? So what happens to water is gonna find this path of laser resistance, right, to the surface. You know, when you drive for bore, you're going this way. And you're, also, you're creating a five inch hole, right? Or if you're reading back bigger ducts, you would create a tenon joint. And then it's gonna follow the path of laser resistance, that's what water does. And so it might, it might be pouring out the ground, you know, five hundred foot back here. But the hits five hundred foot that way, right? But when you plow, it's gonna, ninety-nine percent of the time, it's gonna shoot it around the ground, right? So to me, yeah, it's a little bit more not dangerous, it's it's a little bit, you know. But grasp the roadmap, right? And have your restoration done, make sure you guys, you know, they tear the stuff off, you know, they fix it, right? Um, have have a bond out there, right? I mean, it is what it is, you know, you don't have a bond for the whole project, but have a dollar, but that was my recommendation, Maveka, is have a couple hundred thousand dollar bond out there, right? And then if those guys don't wanna fix it, you know, say they got fourteen days to fix it, whatever. Hit the bond, have a third-party company come on, go fix, right? And that company, other company, other construction company might say, yes, right? Hit my bond, right, or I'll pay you. And I I make my money putting, you know, fiber in the ground, I'll make my money go fix peel tiles.
Right.
So, you know, there's opportunities there for both sides to make everything work for everybody. But how do you make it work, right? And that's where I don't think that this was a very well thought out RFP. That, and I, and I question, you guys all know that, right? I mean, this isn't something that's new here, because I'm very adamant about building quality networks, right? I mean, you don't, you don't get to where I have been and what I've done and retain that for many, many, many years. Unless you prove it to your customers and prove it to the largest customers in the world, right? That you continue to have done it and will do it and say what you're gonna do, right? And I fight, I'm a small guy, I've always been um, the guy that's, you know, never had been handed business, right? I've been, I was the guy who went up and fights for that business and got that business. And when I was in sales, I'm gonna call, right? And then, you know, three years afterwards, Todd Ward decides to come in and say, hey, we don't want you anymore, we wanna farmer, not a, you know, not a go hunter, right, as a sales guy, so we're gonna hand this over to another team. And like, and then all of a sudden, Rydus says, we're not gonna have that, right? Brett, a fault for us and everything we did. And all of a sudden, I don't remember, on Christmas time, a hundred and ninety towers died around Columbus. And but if they want me to go talk to the customer, no, you know, I mean, but it's business, it's business one-on-one. And plus the relationships that we have with Four Fibers. Um, you know, if you ever need to come talk to somebody, right? I mean, I used to sit across from Jamie Diamond, I used to sit with Tony Farinacci, with Lex Lexner and all these guys, right? Cause I ran, I developed their networks, ran their networks, right? And the history speaks for itself. And help you guys and then make it understandable, it's just not Madison County, right? But the network is built and designed properly from day one. It's like building a foundation on a building. Yeah, it might look good for five years, but what's gonna happen in ten years down the road, right? It's gonna collapse. So when you have that type of expertise coming in, not just saying that we're a partner, because that, and I know with the COGS, right, I get that, right? And I know that there's certain benefits to going with COGS, okay? But because of the process and the procedures, right? And you don't want to take prevailing wage or the Davis Bacon Act and things like that, right? But at the end of the day, you still don't have to do it. But it's not all about the dollars and cents, you know? If you, if you spend an extra million here, what's it gonna gain you, you know, twenty years down the road? That million just goes away, right? It's a, it's a rounding error. So just take a look at it, think about it, discuss it, but I would, I would like personally an opportunity to build this network. Or be a partner to build it, cause I, I know Ohio Big very, very, very well and CEO. And I know Tim's having some health issues. Uh, but, you know, I know those guys very, very well, right? They were trying to acquire my company one time. So just take that into consideration that, you know, we're here locally. And we've got the equipment to do it. And what that means is we're not traveling to any miles, we're not traveling here to bring equipment down. We're here, we're gonna be cost effective for you guys. And, you know, it's our name on the thing, right?
Good question. You, so you did submit a bid?
No.
You did not submit a bid.
Uh, Maveka refused to allow Four Fibers um, to bid on the project. Because there was, there was, there was a, an issue when I had my TBI, I was in a traumatic, a very, very bad car accident. Um, I was life flighted that it was right around a year ago. And that they would not, there was issues with Clark County, we built about ninety percent of it out. And I said, you know, and then what was going on here, which I can't get into details with that, Mr. Atkins knows that. Um, it created a huge financial burden for my company, okay? Huge financial burden for my company, for cash flow. And I I asked Maveka that I need some extra, I I don't need extra money on top of the project. But I need money to bring in other contractors, right? To do different things, because now I have to, cause I'm under obligation on this side of it. I've got a different obligation just got thrown at me. And I, but then he's like, well, you're not gonna use that as an excuse. I'm like, well, I don't know what to tell you, but that's the truth, right? Um, and then he decided, cause that was a partner funded project through Clark County. And then he didn't even do a written agreement, he was a verbal agreement. And I told him, oh, you've got to have a written agreement per the law, right? And he just decided to do what he wanted to do, what he wanted to do it. And then he just got mad and then he hired a third-party company called American Broadband out of Plain City. And then another company called GSP out of Marysville. And which is friends, best friends of Jeff Gamra, so there's a couple there, right? Um, but no big deal, it is what it is, and never terminated me. And has failed to pay me and owes me millions of dollars, Maveka does. And so you can see, you know, why I'm a little perturbed with Maveka, right? Um, which is another issue that I'm dealing with. But, um, cause I can only take that so much, you know, I mean, from that perspective, I can build, I'm building right now.
Yeah, the question, sorry to interrupt. When you said you were, you were denied an opportunity to bid, they just told you, you cannot bid, I mean, how did that?
He just never, I I sent in a request for their engineering drawings, an email. I sent in a request um, uh, for questions, right, on the Q and A session. He never responded to anything. Because during that time, he was very upset with me personally. But it does not, it does not. Cause he sent, then all of a sudden, the V who owns Ohio Boring, was I, I financially partner with. Um, and I've supplied him a lot of financial backing to help him grow as a third party. Is that he asked a question, what does a qualified bidder mean, right? And Thor sent back, well, fraud, this, that, this, that, right? So then I said, well, how do you, how do you define a qualified bidder, right? In a public bid? There's no documentation, no proof, no nothing.
So you were working on a job, you got hurt, you couldn't complete the job, and they got mad at you and didn't allow you to bid on this one?
We were nine percent done with the other job. They need to be finished as our month funding rate, they need to be finished by the end of twenty twenty-four, we were already nine percent done. A year later, we only had to be four to six months left to go. So that we were behind.
I get that.
Yes, that is correct, that is correct.
That's the gist of it.
Yes, yes, yeah, that's correct.
And there's now, is there pending litigation between you and then Maveka or Four Fibers and Maveka?
No.
No, okay.
Because.
Cause these look like exhibits for a lawsuit.
Well, I just wanted to tie that in here.
Okay.
If we wanted to, we could right now.
Okay, that's why I thought these were maybe exhibits for a lawsuit.
No, no, these are the binders, but I, I just added that on, so it's not PDF.
Yeah, 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 when I see exhibits at the top of that, I assume they're exhibit.
If we need, yeah, you guys, guys, go right up there. It's just for me that, you know, I don't, Bill Peters is his attorney out of Cincinnati. And um, I've had communication with them. Um, they fail to return my company property. I had like forty thousand dollars stolen over there, you know, that they weren't letting me come back on, it just turned into what I have here. And 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 it, complete unprofessionalism, right? I mean, as you guys know, when you're in construction, right? You do things and you gotta come back and you gotta fix things here, you gotta fix a little bit here, right? Just because of inherent nature of vault settings, right? You gotta come lift it back up, cause you just don't know what's to leave that ground, right? There's, but then we didn't have one complaint from the county. And we'd have one complaint from the cit, correct me, Matt from the city of Springfield? Springfield, Springfield. And um, was that Matt?
Yeah.
It's a map, and then one complaint from ODOT on that entire project. And we've had a couple complaints, um, where when you're plowing, obviously you tear up people's grass, right, a little bit. Come in, I just put sod down, right? Just, you know, it's a guarantee it's fixed. Um, where we work with Tom up in Union County, um, have no issues there. Have no issues, what's the ODOT guy's name out of District Six? Have no issues there.
But you're saying this RFP though is not completely accurate, I mean, you're saying this is a bad
Yeah.
RFP is what you're saying, and if it was reissued, you would then bid on it.
Absolutely. And that could help, I mean, I know it inside and out. We helped develop the entire footage and the entire processor.
I don't doubt that at all, I don't doubt that at all, I'm just trying to get where we're at and where we've been and conversations that have been had. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a better understanding now. Appreciate your time.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else have anything to begin the order? Alright, leading adjournment. Alright, leading adjournment.